Okay. David, you want to beat the case into the record and then?
Sure.
Short discussion since chairing that case?
So case 2420, the applicants Matthew Vanderheiden and Brooke Beavis of 53 Cedar Road. Your Massachusetts general law 40a section eight deal with inspector buildings interpretation of the definition of grade regarding the height of a retaining wall. Erected at the property line at 66 Hill Press Road, Belmont.
Before we start, I'm also going to introduce Alex Danahue.
Hello.
So we had a fairly long hearing at the last meeting and there were a number of public issues surrounding this case that I think leave us with an incomplete understanding of the options that we have in terms of writing a decision. And as a consequence, I suggested that we communicate with town council so that he could outline some of the options that we have. Since our last meeting, I think was only three weeks prior to this one, we really haven't had enough time to communicate with him. So I'm suggesting that we continue until the September meeting so that we have time to to talk to them.
Great. Does the board have any discussion on that proposal?
I did suggest if I could review, if I am incorrectly, tell me that if other people wanted to send questions town council. Or if we wanted just to have David send the questions. If recall, did anybody else recall that possibly?
The intention was to ask town council to put Patrice.
Yes.
He would attend the meeting being an executive meeting before our next meeting, before our September meeting or he would join us during the sessions. But if you just have to send the email. Pass me to a couple.
I'm I'm happy to send an email to Patrice copying you to ask for this help.
Okay.
Would you like to make a motion to continue?
I'd like to make a motion to continue case 2420 until the September ZBA meeting.
I'll second. Actually, I won't second, someone else can second. I won't vote on this one since I was not in person last time for that.
I'll second. And I recuse myself the first time, so.
Okay. Thanks for that reminder. So Alex, David, Teresa and Elliot will vote on this. All those in favor?
I am.
Alright.
Yes. Okay, thanks. The case will be continued to September. Thanks, David. It's number 2414. 78 School Street. Applicant requests five special permits under section 1.5 of the bylaw to demolish existing and reconstruct a larger detached garage at 78 School Street located in single residency zoning district. Section 4.2 of the zoning bylaw dimensional regulations for three structures requires a five foot side setback, a five foot rear setback. Allows a maximum lot coverage of 25% and requires a minimum open space 15%. Special permit one, the existing side setback on the side is 15 feet. And then proposed is 2.7 feet. The existing and proposed side is four feet. Three, the existing and proposed rear setback is 1.4 feet. Four, the existing lock coverage is 31% and the proposed 33.7%. The existing existing open space is 8.7% and the proposed is 43.4%. Do we have a representative for this case?
Yes.
Great.
I am.
Great. So I wasn't here for your first session.
Correct.
But I've watched the video.
Okay.
So I think I'm up to speed.
Okay.
Do you want to explain?
Sure. So we're proposing a change that would be part of the height of the garage is not the disputed matter in terms of the zoning. It was the disputed matter amongst my neighbors. Punch of the garage will now be 13 feet and then sloping back. That would push the water across the ground with my neighbors. So it's actually going to be a gutter added to the back of the garage. It'll bring the water around to into a I'll just dry well. To be scarce of water because I know that water is difficult thing to do in Belmont. And I know it was a lot of coverage of that concern. So those are the two changes that are proposed as the last.
Thanks, Ara. Board members have any questions?
This was wondering, you I thought maybe your husband said that the reason why you wanted the size of the garage was to accommodate some other vehicles other than a car or?
Correct. We have a family Sprinter and that we've converted it.
And are you able to with these changes, are you able to still?
Yep, we'll still be able to maintain the 10 foot height we needed to.
Would compromise as well as addressing in the issues of water to the structure itself. And I just didn't know in terms of why you originally had done that change expansion. If it still meets your needs.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had a question on setbacks. I asked this question at the first hearing as well, but if I'm, am I correct in understanding that in terms of the current setbacks? Which may be nonconforming, but at least one of them, I think is going to become more nonconforming. One is 4.3 feet and it's going to go to 2.7 feet. Is that right? And the rationale for that, the need for that?
I think they squared the size of the garage. The architect made everything even.
Is there the utility issue as well?
Don't believe that that's issue for us now.
Thanks. Same question. Okay, well, we might call you back up for more questions, but we're going to go ahead and do public comment.
Sure.
If anyone is in favor or opposition to the new proposal, please come to the podium and state your name and your address.
Good evening. I'm Sharad Ramanathan. Catherine Do, my wife and I are neighbors of the Dadeos on 41 Myrtle Street, directly north of and downstream of their property downhill. We begin by noting that the proposed plan by the Dadeos requires not one or two, but five special permits. At the last meeting on May 13, 2024, as per the minutes, Mr. Kelly presented the option to request a continuance and return at a future date with a design harmonious to the neighbors and attempt to work within the existing footprint. We were not given the new plans submitted by the Dadeos, and if not for our neighbor, Mr. Sinkel, who will talk next, we remained ignorant about the plans until today. For us, the fundamental issues we raised last time remain completely unresolved. One, the old structure is out of compliance and very close to our property line, less than five feet. The proposed structure would get even closer to the property line, just over two feet, and it has three consequences. A, the proposed structure has higher walls and is longer and is very close to our property line, blocking off light to the only two south facing windows of the kitchen. This is where we have our dining table and this is where our children study every day and the weekends. It would also impact the view from the upstairs south facing window where one of us works every day. Belmont bylaws further states that the site should be able to accommodate the proposed use without substantial environmental impacts, impacts to valuable trees and other natural resources. The proposed garage, because of its increased length and height, would block light to the sun loving plants on the south side of our property. It would be detrimental to more than a decade old set of plants, including a Japanese maple and other flowering bushes. Point two, drainage and warming. The property is already in violation in terms of the lot coverage and the proposed changes make this worse. Covering the land by construction makes the rain related floods in the basement of the houses downhill worse. Three, the bylaws also state the use of the complement, the use should complement the character and scale of the existing buildings, users, activities in the neighborhood and not create undesirable impacts. The structure is intended to house a commercial vehicle, a large Amazon delivery van that has been turned into a This requires the size and height of the garage as well as a rooftop, rooftop not to match the style of the neighborhood. You know that five out of the eight houses on our street do not have a garage. They do not have the space to build one with the required clearances as per Belmont rules. This is an older neighborhood with smaller plot sizes and having two, a two car garage is unusual as it is. The proposed structure does not at all complement the character of the existing buildings. It will be the largest garage in the entire neighborhood in terms of height, depth and width, that too on one of the smallest lots. While camper vans have a lifetime permanent structures in Belmont last over 100 years. In conclusion, this committee asked the Dadeos to work with their neighbors to come up with a modified plan. The new plan was not presented to the neighbors prior to this meeting. From our perspective, the proposed new plan is just as bad as the old one. One, by blocking the only two south racing windows in the kitchen where our study, where our children study and do their homework every day. Two, impacting the views from the upstairs bedroom where one of us works every day. Three, negatively impacting the plants which have been growing for over a decade on the south facing sunny side of our property. Four, the noncompliant coverage of grounds which has negative impact on drainage and heating up the environment. Five, complementing neither the character nor the scale of the buildings in the neighborhood. This modification has substantial undesirable impacts. It'll affect the quality of our life and the value of our property. We beseech you respectfully not to grant the permits and following Mr. Kelly's statement as per the minutes of the last meeting, urge our neighbors to attempt to work within the existing footprint. Thank you.
That's your question?
Yes.
Of the five, where are your top two? What is like most pressing to you?
Getting so close to our property line.
Okay.
And extending well beyond the current length.
Okay.
And in addition, because of the height, we have no sunlight through our south, south facing windows, nor any sunlight to the plants there. It will be a dead zone. It will be a dark corridor.
Okay, there's quite a large tree. I'm not sure which property it's on.
It's on Mr. Sinkel's property on the other side. No, this is the only patch where we get sunlight, particularly in the winters.
Because of the tree?
The tree is gone in the winters. This will be completely dark. Our kitchen where our children study every day will be dark.
Okay. Thank you for highlighting that. Keep them coming.
Yes, okay.
Good evening. I'm Carol St. Colton. I am on a butter directly on 78 School Street. My address is 74 School Street. And the the Dadeos property abuts our property on two sides. So it has an impact on both sides. And we expected after the last meeting that we have some kind of meeting, some kind of discussion about what could be done with the garage. None of that has happened. About three and a half, Amy presented the new plans. And the new plans actually increased the height of the walls. So now the wall on the north side of our property is 13 feet high, down to 12 feet high. It used to be on the old line 11 feet. So if you can imagine, if, and that wall is just about the property line is eight, I don't know, 13 inches away, something like that. So if someone were to erect, say, a fence along the property line, there are, there are rules about how tall fences can be. And and that is essential. What is happening? That's where our patio is and there's now proposed a the back wall of the garage is up against our backyard. Now backyard is probably 70 feet wide. And now we're putting up a 12 foot fence as also to put up a 12 foot wall up against that property. So, so what, so what we're seeing is that there are there are basically all the setbacks are gone. And there's a proposal to build a very large commercial style garage on a very tiny lot. And I think that that lot is basically maxed out. There isn't room for that. And still maintain the character of the neighborhood. And so forth. It's safe is so tight that we have had to set back our fence so that the door on the present, the side door on the present garage would have room to swing. The setbacks blessed in the door swing away from our property line. It seems the thing we're hearing at this meetings is that when there are special permits given, they're given with the entire project in mind. And so originally, whenever these special permits were given, it was a setback for a much smaller function. And now this is considered as, oh, well, you know, now we can build on without any obstruction. And I think that that this new proposal is going to really impact our life in the very small property that we have. And part of the garage is only about six feet from our house. So that also creates this kind of corridor with walls to be this part of human height. So this has a very large impact. And I hope that it does. It will not be allowed.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Ara, is there anyone on Zoom?
Somehow I lost my connection. I don't know what's going on. If you're logging again.
Okay, we'll take a moment and make sure.
Yeah.
There doesn't appear to be anybody who wants to speak.
Thanks, Jeff. I think we'll just give Ara a second to reconnect here.
Login again. I'm sorry.
Take your time. If there's no one, their hand raised. I will close the public portion of the meeting. Let Ara get settled.
While I'm logging in, just to say that the the new plans were posted on the town's website on July 2nd.
Thank you.
And do not notify anyone.
Right.
So it sounds like we're the first.
Right.
Just one more second and I'm rejoining as a panelist.
Give us, give us the all clear.
Are we still in a discussion mode or we?
Well, just, Ara, you, you're good? Okay, yeah, I wanted to open the discussion for the board here.
I just needed to be reminded, I thought somebody said when they first presented that part of this was already approved by the building department.
The replacing an existing with the same footprint, that same shape will be allowed by right. They, they would not lose. So I did not give them, did not issue them any permits. But if they choose to replace the existing with the exact same, then that's my right regardless of the lot coverage. That's what that's what they might do.
Okay. So all of this change is not by right. Nothing was already?
Any expansion, any change?
It kept.
By special permit because they do not.
By special permit.
Five items on the intensity regulations.
Thank you for reviewing that. Well, I'll give you guys my thoughts and I might have a few more questions. I think, Teresa, you're on to something that because it's getting larger in plan. I can understand the neighbors' concerns. I think I'm a little concerned and I'll let you talk in a minute, Amy, that there wasn't conversation with the neighbors. And I think there may be room for some compromise along the north side. I do appreciate the addition of the the dry well for the concerns regarding the water runoff and I think what may be not harmonious with some of the concerns and what the larger footprint, what the larger footprint gives is that the larger the footprint, the more water is contained and drained. So you know, to me, the, the north side is, is a bit of a pinch point for me. I understand the height concern because it's very close to the property line, but I believe right now it's a, it's pitched through. I don't know that we know the, or I don't know that we know the existing height, but I think overall it is getting shorter. So I'm not sure what, what you all had thought when you saw the change of plan.
Didn't they say it went from 11 feet to 12 feet in the back, went up a foot?
I, I think that that's the height of the wall, but not the height of the?
The current ridge line is 14 feet to 11 inches, I think.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you. My concern is the footprint.
How do you feel about the extension into the existing driveway?
It's funny. I looked, I went and looked at the property this weekend and I was trying to envision the view from 41 Myrtle, but I couldn't get a good angle. So I don't know how much other view or or how much shadow is created by the extended length.
Any other discussion?
I was gonna say, I understand. I'm hearing the concern about the wall height. I think it is a tight space for the neighbor at 74 School Street. But I agree with what you're saying. If there's a way to, is there some kind of compromise looking at the, what the concerns are? That can be
So I noticed the driveway pitches up towards the garage. And if they're bringing that forward, is that why the top is taller to make up for the pitch? Would it be possible for them to dig down lower to keep the pitch lower and not try to create it with such a high roof? Just dig down deeper if you're going to do the whole project over and get rid of the garage. Go down two feet, have things start at a little point before not occurring any more.
Option is not regulated, so they can, yes.
So that, you know, the neighbors seem to be?
When I was, when I was there, the cars were parked in front of the existing garage.
Yeah.
That part looked, I thought about, looked pretty flat there before it pitched down. So I'm not, I may be remembering incorrectly.
No, they were cross parked there. I just noticed that it went up.
Yeah.
And then the garage is there, but they're coming forward.
Yeah.
And the front is 14 feet and it pitches back to 12. So is that extra two feet to make up for the, any kind of a?
No, it was 14 before. Now it's lower.
13 in the front.
13.
12 in the back, I think. Yep.
It was 1411 to the ridge of a hip roof, the initial, the original application. Now it's reduced to 13 to 12 to make it flat roof. So it could be reduced. I'm just mentioning what to change, so.
But Ara, do you know what the current height of that structure is now?
I don't know what the current height is.
The walls have H feet marks currently. For the side wall. These new plans is 40 high.
Do you have the previous station? I think that the I'm not sure what sheet it is. Number three, three of three has existing dimensions rather go off of.
Need a minute?
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, fine. Just just don't want to lose for.
Actually, maybe here. Point dwelling. Sorry, that's I don't know what that is. That's a side yard.
Sure. Down existence.
It's hard because it's giving it dwelling height. Yeah, third page, there it is. I don't know if it's on that page. Can you, I can't see that. Can you see?
Yeah. It's the original.
I think the bottom line, I'm sure if it says height, I think it may just say dwelling.
It's true.
It just says the yeah, top, not the wall. That's okay.
Carol and I went and measured last time together. They were eight.
Okay.
That's where it's getting.
Okay, thanks.
But even at 13 feet, my front sloping to 12 in the back, is that higher than the current garages?
Not the garage, but the walls.
Okay. Yeah, that's older. Thanks for pointing that out, Ara.
Okay. Yeah, this, this is the original. And says the height to the ridge was 1411.
Amy, do you want to move to the podium? I think you've heard the discussion. And I'm wondering your thoughts on what you've heard and if you think it may be worth having further discussion with your neighbors. To summarize what I'm hearing and if you all think I have missed something, please jump in. I think I'm hearing that the, the side setbacks are of concern. And I, I think you know, mimicking the existing side setbacks in this nook, if you will, might be worth conversation. I appreciate the additional drainage. I know that's a small expense. And in terms of the height, you know, I'm, I don't know if the board members have more thought or discussion about that. I think there may be some other compromises that I actually heard from the last hearing that, that may be worth discussion. I understand that Mr. Sinkel's fence is sort of offset from his property line to accommodate an existing door. I'm just hearing, you know, just throwing things out there that you might want to have conversation about. If you are interested in continuing conversation with your neighbors, we'd be happy to continue. If you'd like us to take a vote, I think we can. I think we're prepared to do that. So I, I want you to be part of that discussion process.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. I, I met with Mr. Sinkel in, in great detail before the previous meeting, where we walked through and took out key measures and, and got up there and it, you know, it's my understanding that the height was objectionable, just the compromise that was presented here. I did, you know, bring that to his home. He held back all comment, but said he'd wonder if you were more hadn't heard back from him. I also reached out to, to Sherrod and Catherine. Sherrod, in response to me, said, I will not support anything that violates the zoning laws. I said, we do understand that the existing garage violates five things that I, I will continue to violate five things even if I do nothing, right? And I said, unless you're willing to accept that fact,
Yeah.
I can't speak to it. And he said, I cannot accept that fact. And I said, okay. And I reached out to his wife separately and she did come to my home. I presented her with options to accommodate this north side. She informed me that no compromise was acceptable in her eyes. And I was really disappointed in that. I had taken the time to speak to my neighbor across the street. Perhaps a background of architecture for ideas on ways to accommodate it. Another neighbor who'd reached out and really wanted to help close the gap. And so I was highly disappointed that she was not open to giving me a feel for what were the things that would make her feel better or not, if she just-
Can I ask if that since the previous-
Yes, that's between the two meetings.
Okay.
We sat down and talked and she pushed down.
I'm, I'm sorry to hear that.
Can we, can we, can we outside that?
Yes, that's fine, but we have any speaking right now, so.
This is fine. I just wanted to know if I-
You know, I'm just gonna say in general, we really encourage neighbors to speak to each other and come to a compromise.
I agree.
And I'm disappointed that that hasn't happened here. I don't. Okay, I, I appreciate your, your follow-up on that.
The only other follow-up I just wanna say is the, the, the door. That's, Carol had brought that up to me before. The door on the side goes away with the new design and the fence can be designed where, where it's supposed to stand.
I'm just gonna ask if the board has any additional questions for, for Amy? So we can let her sit down if not. Okay, thank you for coming back up. Oh, yes, you can come back up.
I agree.
Can you please say your name and state your address for our neighbors?
My name is Catherine. I'm at forty-one Myrtle Street. I'm the wife of Cheryl, my husband, who talked earlier. It is true that Amy and I met after the last meeting and I thought we actually- and I was trying to understand. And there was a different plan that she had suggested and that meeting. Love moves your car around, but my concern was in general, like the, the extended length is really affecting our property and the height and I'm repeating this. I just thought, I, I told her, Amy, I'm really sorry, but we cannot support a bigger garage. The garage is already big for us and it's fine. It was granted and we live it. But I cannot support it. And we actually talked about like, like rebuilding, maybe making the the garage door bigger so that one car can fit in nicely and then there's, there's also space for bikes. So it was actually building on the existing structure that would allow parking bikes and cars. We talked about it and I thought we parted actually in good faith and, and in good neighborhood. And I was very, very sad to see that then there was a plan and a hearing and so on. We have not seen the new. So, and that's what my husband said. We have not seen this newest plan that we are discussing. Like our conversation was based on a different.
Ari, am I correct that the setback that's becoming in my eyes less informing the four point three to the two point seven, that's on the Myrtle Street side, the east side?
Yeah, first, so I'm looking at the plot and it's so like, you know, inside out.
Well, it looks like from the design, it's, it's Myrtle Street, which would be-
Yes, the forty-one Myrtle Street, yeah.
Well, I think what Elliot said earlier was it's a really good thought that, that a lot of the story I'm hearing is the height. And if you said having a driveway that slopes upwards of Myrtle Street, if you had it sloped down, if you dug deep enough that you could then have the height of the garage that's needed to accommodate the camper, uh, but it wouldn't throw, wouldn't block any more light that's, that is currently being lost. This is for a discussion between neighbors. Maybe there'd be some, some happiness resulting from that.
Like go ask them now and see if, uh, let's discuss it here.
It's more than the height is to bring in the garage forward, which further blocks kitchen windows and further blocks the house. That's not happening now. The garage gets extended forward, which furthers the blockage of their windows and the house that's existing. It's not so much the height.
And I don't think it's the length, the length of the wall.
My suggestion was if the neighbors agree if the grade was lowered by two feet, then this thirteen feet front height come down to eleven. And that, that could be a compromise with the neighbors if they agree to do the driveway over, so. I mean, that was my thing. If they wanna discuss it now or go out and discuss it and come back to see like if they can agree on something and
Yeah.
Kind of like postponing until another meeting.
I think that there's some planned dimensions. You know, there's, it doesn't need to be quite so wide in the sort of north-south direction. I think I understand the desire to put bikes in and accommodate that. I think the the sprinter, you know, in the garage is designed has some pretty good walk-around room. Could get a little snuggier, but I do think that to accommodate the, that vehicle, it, it's going to have to get for longer. And I guess what I'm thinking about it also is, you know, the sprinter is either parked in the garage or it's parked outside and blocking the light too. So I don't, you know, I had that thought too, but then I'm, I realize it's what's permanent, a permanent structure versus a temporary, but.
So if the neighbors could get happy, I mean-
I don't know that anybody's gonna be happy.
Yeah, or, or happy enough. The go, going from four point four setback with starting non-conforming to two point seven foot setback would not concern me if the neighbors, because if there's other things that are happening that reduce the height impact on the neighboring property to the north and people are okay with that outcome, then even if you have a, a further loss of setback, uh, the neighbors are okay with that result because maybe the height's been, that issue maybe has been addressed to some extent. Terrific if, but that's for these folks to decide. They wanna have that chance.
I was so good knew what takes, what the height of the existing building was to compare with the thirteen and the twelve.
The existing is fourteen point nine, I think. That's what it says and the, the walls are shorter, correct? Or like this.
And although it's a hip roof and it doesn't have that bulky, which-
Yeah.
Again, I'm just again, I mean, I, I don't wanna continue this.
No, I know.
It's more work for me.
If, if they were to do that, one suggestion I would have is to look at the different options and look at what those, like put it into some kind of graphics. You can see like, here is, here's what we have, the existing. Here's what this plan, it's, so the roof gets shorter, but the walls get a little bigger or and, and maybe in that you can come up with a better negotiation too, to play with the dimensions.
Would you like to continue this case, having heard the board's discussion and what our pinch points are? Or would you like us to vote this evening?
I think if, if it is acceptable, then it would ask that we that I, I'd be like a compromise of the width. So if we wanted to take the width back to the original stat lines, it will, um, that, okay. I'm uncomfortable with continuing to have a conversation with the neighbors given they will not compromise on the, the thing. Um, absolutely. If, you know, if we don't have the opportunity to change the length, then the answer is sort of in the footprint, which I believe is the area and a fifteen foot height. Right?
My, my sug- my suggestion is that, that you, this is my suggestion. I, I think you have to take it or leave it, is to look at opportunities to reduce the proposed footprint, as you've discussed. And I would provide the updated plans to your neighbors and try to engage in a discussion. And I understand that may be challenging and I think that would be an appropriate next step. Um, and we would be happy to hear this case. We don't have a meeting in August. We have a meeting in September. As long as, I think Ari just gave our a little heart attack. Will it fit on the agenda in September?
Uh, can I get back to you in like ten minutes? My, my other half is at home babysitting.
I understand. Can we?
So this is out to me. All right. So it's gonna be only you. We don't, we don't like giving the email addresses of board members directly to the public. So she can reach out to me. I'll reach out to you while-
Yeah, I think she needs to speak to her other half.
I know.
Out to make a decision. Can we-
As if she agrees.
Can we do what we normally do, um, or says on the thing, but we don't do and just, uh, decide, make a, make a motion for this later? What do we do? I don't know how, we don't, don't, we don't normally pause.
Continue until September. I mean, whatever's-
She's trying to decide if that's the course she wants to go. She needs to make a phone call.
You can put it on hold now and she can go out, she can call, she can come back and just-
Great, okay.
After the second, the other evening.
Yes, we will
pause.
Pause this case, case, uh, twenty-four fourteen.
Until after the next day.
Till after the next case. I, I think we're just gonna let her decide if she wants to continue or not. That's what we're gonna do. Okay, so we'll that signal when you come back. Case, where am I? Twenty-four twenty-one. Great, sorry. One forty-eight Fletcher Road. The applicant's request on special permit under section one point five of the bylaws to construct dormer at one forty-eight Fletcher Road. Located in single A zoning district, section four point two point two of the bylaw requires a rear yard setback with forty feet. Existing rear setback to the dwelling is nineteen point three and the proposed dormer is thirty-three point three feet. Good evening.
I think that's my client's right there.
Hi, thank you, guys. One second to get your paperwork done.
Sure, no, no problem.
All right, I'm ready.
All right. Uh, good evening. I'm Steve Miller from Miller Design and I'm here representing Kieran. Glenn Mullin and Kevin Borke requested a special permit, so in section twelve point two of the Belmont zoning ordinance. Special permit is for a non-conforming rear yard setback on separate elevation. The original house was constructed nineteen point eight feet from the rear property line. Uh, the primary home volume is about thirty-two point two feet from property lines. We are proposing to maintain the non-conformity at thirty-seven point three feet from the rear property line for new, the new dormer to add a floor space. The dormer otherwise meets all Belmont zoning criteria. We looked at options for adapting their space. We can settle on a plan proposal for you, which utilizes the existing footprint and frame and takes advantage of the existing walk-up half-story space and plumbing locations. We also located the dormer on the side of the house facing away from the street. It's important to note that the rear yard neighbor is the sporting fields of Belmont Hill School, so there is no neighboring impact in that direction. We have also talked to and received signatures of support from other adjacent neighbors. You're asking the zoning board to appeal to grant us this special permit, allowing us to re, to build this half-story. But the associated dormer has proposed, it is our belief that the addition is keeping within the character of the neighborhood and not detrimental to the community. Thank you.
Does the board have any questions?
I have a question that's not, doesn't bear on the case. What is the street address for this property?
What's that?
What's the street address for this property?
One forty-eight Fletcher. And if you look it up in the Belmont assessor's database, there's something not quite right.
But the, the number on the house is one fifty.
Something weird.
So the postal address is one fifty?
That might be a better question for the-
I was just, I did, I was-
I, I know. I drove around it like six minutes.
I pulled it up on the assessor's databases. It didn't come up at first. I'm like, what is it? Then it came up as one fifty. They might know the answer to that. I don't know it.
I don't know.
That's not bearing on the case. I couldn't under, I couldn't figure it out.
I'm glad you said something because I was also confused.
As are we.
Okay. No questions. Uh, I think we'll open this for public comment. Is anyone in the room um, in favor or opposition, space? If you're on Zoom and you're, okay, there's no one.
Oh, there's one person over there, but-
In favor or opposition, please raise your hand.
Uh, they're not raising their hand, so.
Okay. Great, we will close the public portion. Does the board have any discussion?
This is really just, this is more administrative. There's a typo if this has to be filed with the addresses on here. I just- Oh, just if it needs to be filed anyway, but I don't have any, I think the project-
The intern, right?
Hit copy and paste on another-
We all make, that's enough. We need a turd, yeah. I think we've all been there, so, yeah. All right, so with, since I'm not hearing any discussion, I'm gonna make a motion for case twenty-four twenty-one to approve the applicant's request for one special permit under section one point five of the bylaw to construct a dormer at one forty-eight Fletcher Road located in single residence A zoning district. Section four point two point two of the bylaw requires a rear yard setback of forty feet. The existing rear setback to the dwelling is nineteen point eight feet and the proposed dormer is thirty-seven point three feet. Let's see. So let's, let's have Dan, David, Theresa, Elliot and myself vote on this one. All those, oh, do I have a second? Did you chew it?
Okay, that's okay.
Okay, motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you have a decision? Okay.
I, I'm not looking for a continuance today because it's been made very clear to me by my north side neighbors there on Myrtle Street that any change of footprint is unacceptable and any footprint, to your point, was extended to accommodate the van. My understanding from what Farah said earlier in the meeting is I am welcome to work within the footprint without a permit.
With a permit.
Thank you for that clarification. And so I don't have to come back necessarily to, to present that again.
Yeah. If that, so if that is what you'd like to do, I would suggest that you withdraw your application. That way there won't be a decision on it.
Okay.
If that's what you'd like to do, I think of the boards, you, you've heard the board's discussion?
Yeah.
And I think that might be valuable.
Okay, yeah, uh, you know, I have come with, you know, kitty corner in the corner, so it's off the windows and things and that was on the climb, so.
Yes, you've, you've heard the board's discussion.
Got it.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so then I withdraw.
Right, okay, so. Right, okay, so.
Well, there's two vote on accepting the withdrawal.
We understand that. Okay, so I'm sorry, Michelle, for the, for the minutes. We're back on case twenty four twenty. Um, so I understand that the applicant, oh, sorry, twenty four fourteen. Excuse me. Um, I understand that the applicant would like to withdraw their request for five special permits. Um, I would like to make a motion to accept this withdrawal. Uh, Alex, do you want to vote on this one? Um. Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Hi. David, you're on. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, board members. Thank you, neighbors. Laura?
Sure, they can apply six months or next year, two years, whatever they choose.
I'm just making it up. All good, so get me.
Yep. You see, you want to begin the other case? I have to take this.
Yes, yeah.
Phone call?
Yes.
Yeah.
I need to get reorganized myself.
I mean, you can begin and, oh, yeah, there are, I think they're here, there are.
There are some thoughts down. Votes. Who seconded that? Did you second that one? Alright.
Ron. See that coming.
Um. Are you okay if we start without Aura for your case?
Yeah, that's.
Okay, I'm just gonna read it then.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, okay. Um. Let's see, case number twenty four twenty two. Fifty three to fifty five flat road. The applicant requests one special permit under section one point five of the bylaw to construct a dormer at fifty three fifty five. Flat road located in a general residence zoning district, section. Four point two point two of the zoning bylaw, dimensional regulation requires a minimum side setback of ten feet. The existing and proposed side setback on the north is seven point zero feet. Dan, we'll have you. Vote on this one. Um, so please come up and introduce yourself, post your address right now and tell us a little bit about your project.
Yeah, thank you.
Just keep going.
Sure, thank you, board members and thank you, Aura. Um, I'm Wei Liu and this is my husband, Li Jing. Uh, we are the owner of fifty three fifty five flat road. Um, um. As owner of this flat, uh, this house, we are proposing to build a small shed dormer over the existing stair at the. At attic level, missing enough headspace to improve the safety conditions. Um, below us for me, uh, main reasons that we need to build this summer. Uh, number one, uh, the most important goal of this shed is to increase the headspace over the attic stairs. Now, the current headroom is, uh, very limited and even with the skylight. But, um, against the, uh, code, building code requirement of eight, um, inches. Um, so, and there are existing bedrooms and, uh, one baths on this level. So building shed will make the headspace for this stair, uh, full compliant. Uh, and will improve the safety of people living on the level. Um, the second reason pretty much is, uh, it will enable us to rebuild the attic stairs, which is currently very steep and not safe. Certainly being the small shed dormer is not detrimental to the existing neighborhood. Um, um, there are, it's very familiar in our neighborhood and both houses next to us have, um, bigger dormers. But, um, they are all in support with our, as you say, the summer, I would talk, talk to all the neighbors around us in front of, of. Across the street, on both sides and behind us, they are all very much. Um, as well as some other neighbors, I, we have their features as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Um, board members, do you have any questions? Joe, thank you. Um. Going to open this. Case up for public comment. If there are any fun. In favor or opposition, if you're on Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand. Okay, it's seen done, public portions. Do you have any discussion? Entertain a motion?
I would like to make motion regarding case twenty four twenty two to approve. One special permit to construct a dormer at fifty three fifty five flat road. Located in a general residential section four point two point two of the zoning bylaw. Requirements require a minimum side setback of ten feet. The existing and proposed side setback on the north side is seven feet.
I'll second. Um, so we, I said, Dan, you're gonna, did I say that? Okay, good. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Passive hands, like congratulations.
And, um, I can, I can write this one.
Oh, thank you.
Um. By me.
Please.
So seventy eight School Street, the withdrawal, I like the decision on file.
Can you say that again?
I'm sorry, seventy eight School Street, the withdrawal.
Yes.
I will write it and file it.
Thank you, yes.
And one forty eight Fletcher, I can hear who was gonna write it.
Dan, would you be so kind? No, you did, you didn't do that one, did you? No.
Alex did.
Alex did. Sorry, my notes are getting.
No, Alex did on the School Street.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I'm getting out. Dan, could you? Fletcher?
You want to write it?
Uh, did I, it doesn't matter if I voted on it or?
You did vote on it.
You voted on Fletcher.
I got confused too, because it's out of order on my list now.
Okay.
Thanks for doing the School Street, Aura. Okay. Alright, last but not least. Okay, case twenty four twenty three. Forty seven Louise Road. The applicant requests two special permits under section. Point five of the bylaws for reconstruct a garage at forty seven Louise Road located in single residence zoning district. Uh, section four point two by law for accessory structures requires a minimum five foot setback from the side and rear property line. The existing proposed side setback to the garage is four feet. The existing and proposed rear setback is three point eight feet. Perfect. They all have the documents, so don't worry too much.
I didn't know you had the big screen. Um, my name is Wendy Cody and I'm working with Susan and Doug Barker at forty seven Louise Road. Um. Their existing garage was falling down and deemed unsafe. So I worked with them on designing a new garage to better meet their needs. Um. Some of the objectives for the new garage were to. Uh, it was a safe land, just make it a little easier than it is now to better accommodate a car. Um, and to create more space between the garage and the house. This is the primary entrance to their house, to their mudroom, and it's tight. And also, um, stone floor. The flooring is tight as far as getting out of the garage and then making sharp right turns to the back to clear in the winter. Um, so those were a couple of objectives. And then the third one was just aesthetics. Trying to, um. Figure out a way to have the garage relate a little better to the house aesthetically, um. And match, oh, thank you for the pictures. Yep, that's the same. Garage now. So we wanted to match the existing roof pitch and also, um, we changed the shade to a hip roof. To better kind of, um. Allow some light and less. Shade and shadow, um. So we're here tonight asking the board for relief on both the side setback and the rear setback. Side setback of the existing garage is four feet and we're looking to maintain that four feet. And at the rear, um, it's currently three point eight feet. And again, we're looking to just. Maintain the existing, um, setbacks that are there now for the exists, the existing garage. Um, we are not exceeding lot coverage and we're actually, um. On the minimum requirements for space. So I just want to point out that the new zoning does not. Need the pieces so nonconforming, nonconforming. Um, we feel, we feel that this new garage is. An improvement to what's there now. Um, as far as functional and also just aesthetics and fitting in with the neighborhood. Um, and then Doug and Susan did get letters of support from the neighbors. I don't know if you want to elaborate, but.
We were met with the neighbors and.
All of others.
Yeah, we saw it, we have that. Um, board members, do you have any questions on the proposal?
Uh, if I could just ask about the trees behind there. Those are pretty sized trees. When I drove by. Already demolished the garage, is that correct?
Yes, the garage came down. Falling down, yep.
So what I saw, that that space is vacant, I saw some trees. Trees that they're not impacting anything of this construction, the roots or anything on the landscaping of the trees.
Um.
Trees are, uh, joining.
They belong to your neighbor.
To the neighbors, they belong to the neighbors.
They belong to the neighbors.
They're buying neighbors to live here.
Okay.
And they haven't improved over the years.
Have been improving. Okay, thank you. Well, I just identified what I saw and was questioning about. That element.
Great, thank you very much.
Sure.
I will open the public portion. Anyone who's in favor, opposition. On Zoom. Senior favor, so. Okay, no one's there?
Easy, easy.
Alright, we'll close the public portion. The board, uh, Alex will have you vote on this one. Do I do this? Have I done this out of order? Now I'm confused. No, we're good, okay. Uh. Does the board have any discussion?
I like the roof. I changed it. Looks really nice.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Oh, did you?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I, I will, um, make a motion for the board to approve two special permits. To construct a garage at forty seven Louise Road located in single residence. Uh, C zoning district. Four point two of the bylaw for accessory structures require a minimum five foot setback from the side and rear property lines. The existing and proposed side setback to the garage of four feet. And the existing and proposed rear setback is three point eight feet.
All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Your passive. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, Sheldon.
I know you were worried after the first round, but.
We learned.
Yeah.
Yeah, good neighbors. They were here a month ago, so.
Oh, that's right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
There's a.
Alex, you said you'll write that?
Yes, I can write that one, great.
Uh, okay. So. And. You've had a chance to review the June seventeenth meeting minutes? Okay, great. I am gonna have you five vote on them since I was hybrid, uh, for that meeting and I missed the first five minutes. Um. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes, Dan?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great. And so our next meeting, skipping July, skipping August is September ninth?
The September second is Labor Day.
Yes.
Unless you vote, so I'm gonna come. I won't leave.
Okay, yeah, I think the ninth sounds good.
Number nine.
Okay.
And, uh, wait, I don't think we have any new cases for September nine.
Okay, maybe by those.
There will be one or two, I know that.
You don't have any?
What is the T vote?
What?
For the MBTA?
MBTA vote, that's September, isn't it?
That's for town, town meeting.
Is that after the ninth or before?
So which vote again?
MBTA vote, community. Oh, just a question.
That's our meeting vote.
But when is it? It's in?
Oh, they're gonna try in September.
That's right.
They'll try.
My question.
Okay, we'll.
That's it.
You see it?
It's very hard to pass it.
Yeah.
Are we still have any cases for September?
Far.
Transfers.
Continue to.
Have it continued.
We've got time for August regardless, so. Stuff like I have. I postponed any cases. We didn't get any that would have made it for August. But I'm sure, well, I have one or two that might come. Well, there is one already.
So if the MBTA vote passes, people will be able to build by right and they won't have to come. In front of us?
No.
No? Okay.
In those districts.
Town meeting is warning on. Is allowing certain areas in town. Allow zoning changes. If they come to build for three deckers, four deckers or.
Other.
Larger buildings. That's what the town meeting is gonna vote on. It's on. Overlay districts in certain areas which currently are three. Belmont Center. Beverly Square area is large area. And the. Southeast. Port of town. Those are the three areas that are under discussion. Nothing has been finalized by the board, by the planning board yet. When it's finalized with the zoning changes, it's gonna be like five types of. This designs, like it's gonna be. Uh, either like three families. Then you have like commercial on the bottom and. Whatever footprint, those things, okay. And that's, and it's the zoning change, not any building project, that's.
Okay.
I hope I could explain.
To allow them multifamily, I think.
That's the idea. They have to add about sixteen hundred and fifty some. Units to the town. But they have to plan, present to the board, to the state roughly eighteen hundred plus. So the state can say, this is acceptable, this part is not, or whatever it is. It may take like two. It may take like two, three months before they get back to the town to say, this is acceptable and this is not, change it, don't change it, or whatever it is, before town meeting.
Very nice.
It's just somebody.
Thanks, Aura.
Meeting for you to be voting.
That meeting is gonna be tomorrow. It will not end at eight o'clock.
No. So I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. All those in favor? All right.